Good evening. I call this regular meeting order to order at 6:42 PM. Pledge of allegiance by Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Please stand, face the flag, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Roko, please.
Mayor Wu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Manchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Present.
Our city attorney will now give the closed session report from the special meeting held earlier tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I will not give that report. Because our closed session has been continued until after the meeting, so we will have to report after the end of our closed session.
Thank you. We will now have some announcement from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
So approval of agenda order. Are there any objections to the agenda order? I see none. So the agenda order is approved. Next item, please.
Presentations. Recognition of Fire Department Promotion. Fire Chief Wallace will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, and members of the city council. Steve Wallace, Fire Chief for the City of San Gabriel. And tonight I have the privilege of introducing the most recent member of the San Gabriel Fire Department to promote to the rank of Fire Captain. The Fire Captain is a frontline manager in the fire service, and the Captain oversees a fire station and is responsible for the health and safety of the members under his or her command. He's also responsible for emergency response, tactical and pre-fire planning, probationary and in-service training, engages in public education and community interaction, manages a team of firefighters and firefighter paramedics, maintains stations, maintains equipment, maintains apparatus, and that's just but a little of the multitude of other responsibilities. Tonight I'd like to introduce Captain Taka Suzuki. Captain Suzuki's been with the department now for nine years, and he came to us as an entry-level firefighter paramedic from Huntington Beach Fire Department. He's promoted engineer in 2020 and was appointed as Fire Captain in December of 2024. Captain Suzuki holds a bachelor's degree from Long Beach State University and is currently working on his master's through Columbia Southern. He's a very, very active member of our department. He's a member of the Urban Search and Rescue Rescue Task Force Four, a member of our REMS team, has deployed numerous times as a fireline paramedic and field observer on major wildfires. He's our spark-of-love toy drive coordinator and also now a fire investigator trainee. Taka also teaches at the Rio Hondo Fire Academy because he doesn't have enough other things going on, where he's a physical fitness instructor and is part of the live fire and HOSE cadres. This evening Captain Suzuki will be pinned by his wife Valerie and their daughters Satu and Kana. So if we could bring you up. And Chief City Clerk, if you could administer the oath of office, please.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Taka Hiro Suzuki.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
To support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I'll bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
I entered into this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So may I invite, before we, I invite Captain to speak. I'm sorry, oh, the campaign? Ah, yeah. No more, no, please, please. So maybe just have him to speak.
Mayor Wu, Vice Mayor Manchaca, council members, city attorney, city manager, thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you to Chief Wallace, as well as my peers and coworkers, for all the support and this position. It's a great honor and I'm excited, so thank you.
And if I could ask the council to come down front, we could take a picture, please.
Next item, please.
Recognition of Recreation Coordinator Jackie Vialvazo for recipient of Professional Service Award of Excellence, Rising Professional, from California Parks and Recreation Society. Community Services Director Perez will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight I am pleased to share that Jackie Vialvazo has been selected as a recipient of the Rising Professional Award through the California Parks and Recreation Society, or CPRS. Jackie currently serves as Recreation Coordinator for the Community Services Department and as the Communications Director for CPRS District 13. Jackie began her career just over two years ago with the City of San Gabriel as a recreation specialist, and now as a Recreation Coordinator oversees contract classes, various special events, and a rapidly growing middle school sports program, including a three-on-three basketball league. In her relatively short time here with the city, Jackie has quickly become an integral part of the Community Services Department. She's immersed herself into the community and has developed enhanced programming that best meets the needs of the residents. She's built a strong and positive relationship with community stakeholders, including parents and school district staff, leading to a sports program that has received praise and helped continue a successful partnership with the school district. Jackie's a shining light within the recreation profession and has made immense impact with the City of San Gabriel. She is sure to reach great heights within the profession and will continue to leverage her education and experience to have a positive impact on the lives of many more youth throughout her career. Though she received her award at the CPRS conference last month in Sacramento, we want to celebrate her tonight, and so we have her award. I think Marilyn has that. So council, if you'd like to come forward and present to Jackie.
Okay, so I would like to invite council to. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on consent calendar items and on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. Our first speaker this evening is Doug Richter.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Manchaca, and the city council. Okay, one reason I'm here is concerning the police department. I know we discussed it the last meeting, and we hired half a dozen more police officers for the ones that were leaving. And Vice Mayor Manchaca brought up the idea that how long has it been since we've actually seen how many officers we really need in the city? We've been on this number fifty-four for I don't know how many years now. And I would think it's about time, I think, that somebody like Mark and maybe the chief get together and to discuss whether we should have more officers, leave it the same, or whatever. Now, I go to the talk of the town, which used to be the four-one-one with the chief, and actually, we have more, or just about as many people as that, as we have at the city council meeting tonight. And consensus there is mainly, we need more officers. Now, when I go for my walk about every other day around the city, in the village area where I live, I see people running stop signs, I see people going through signals, making illegal U-turns, and yet there's no motorcycle officer around to ticket any of these people. So if anything, we need more motorcycle policemen. And I noticed in the state of the city, we did get forty thousand dollars for at least to do a motorcycle. That way they put an officer on the motorcycle. So anyway, that's basically what I'm at, is let's just sit down and talk and decide whether we need it or not. And since we do have a surplus that I noticed that was mentioned, and we, it's time we put the money aside for these officers. I know we're short now, but one of these days, hopefully, we'll get some more. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ace Angara.
I have no more speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then next item, please. I'm sorry, would anyone would like to pull an item for separate discussion? For a consent? Wait, let me see. I'm sorry, it should be like next item, right?
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion.
Thank you. Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion? At least likely, we have very light tonight.
So I'll just move to approve.
I second.
Okay, motion made by Vice Mayor Manchaca and second by Councilmember Tony Ding. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of five-zero.
Thank you. Next item, please.
We have no public hearing or continued business. Our next item is new business item A, Professional Services Agreement with Tyler Technologies for the purchase, implementation, and software licensing and maintenance of Tyler's Enterprise Resource Planning software for a one-time cost of four hundred seventeen thousand two hundred eight dollars and annual subscription of one hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars. Finance Director Kohola Kula will make the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, or good evening, Mayor. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Will Kohola Kula, Finance Director for the City of San Gabriel. Tonight, we are seeking your approval for a subscription-based agreement with Tyler Technologies for a new enterprise planning, or ERP, system. Essentially, this is our city's financial system. For the past twenty-two years, the city has relied on Tyler Technologies' Eden system to manage its financial operations. The financial systems includes general ledger accounting, payroll, budgeting, cash receiving and accounts payable, accounts receivable, project accounting and capital assets. And then while Eden system served us well over the last twenty-two years, Tyler formally announced that they will no longer support the Eden system beginning February two thousand and twenty-seven. So this means that there will be no further updates, security patches, or technical support available beyond that date. So once we heard that news, the city staff initiated a thorough evaluation process beginning in August of two thousand and twenty-three to identify a suitable replacement. We did a comprehensive needs assessment that was conducted through a city, that included all city departments. And in that comprehensive needs assessments that included all city departments, we identified the key features that we were looking for in a new ERP system. We evaluated two vendors, Tyler, their enterprise ERP system, and Springbrook, their citrus platform. We conducted full-day demonstrations and we had internal evaluations for both the Springbrook product and the Tyler product. And Tyler Enterprise ERP system emerged as the only solution that the city's operational, technical, that met the city's operational, technical, and functional requirements. So this new ERP system that we're presenting tonight will enable the city to introduce a Human Resources Information System Module. Currently, we do not have a HR information system module. Adding a HR information system module will streamline payroll and human resources, such as processing personnel action forms. We'll be able to eliminate many of the paper-based processes. We'll enable online workflows, online approvals. We'll improve our financial reporting, and then it'll provide a secure browser-based access for remote and field staff. And then lastly, it'll enhance our budgeting and forecasting capabilities. The cost of this new system, so there is a one-time implementation cost of four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. This will be spread over an eighteen through twenty-four-month period, and the annual subscription fee is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars one hundred and sixty-nine, and we're adding an HR module to it. We currently pay approximately forty-two thousand for the Eden system. So since we're a Tyler customer, we'll receive a credit for our, the Eden subscription that we paid for, and we will not have to incur dual subscriptions for two ERP systems. In our fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five budget, we included two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project. So that money will be carried over to twenty-five twenty-six, and then in twenty-six twenty-seven, we'll budget for the remaining of the implementation costs. Tyler Technologies is a, is not only proven in the local government municipal ERP market, but what their software is also used by many of our surrounding cities, including neighboring cities of Monterey Park, Alhambra, Glendora, Covina, and Pasadena. So in conclusion, transitioning to Tyler ERP will not only, will modernize our operations and enable better service delivery to both internal and external stakeholders. With that, we respectfully recommend that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with Tyler Technologies. I can take any questions that you might have. Additionally, we have Jason Cludier, the Account Executive for Tyler Technologies, who is joining us via the, virtually. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Will, and welcome, Jason, and thank you so much for being here. Does any council member have any question for Will or Jason to answer or clarify? Yes, council member.
Mayor, thank you. Just a quick question for Will. Looks like a good product and has the added benefit that we already use their product. So, you know, the onboarding or whatever this will be, be, would be a little more seamless. But my general question is, according to the staff report, it says that if council approves it tonight, the actual implementation period will start on October first. And I'm just curious why that is and not like right now? Or is it just staff's timing on, on how, you know, how these processes work?
Yeah, thank you for the question, council member. So, and working with Jason, they begin their implementations every quarter. So instead of as soon as people pass it, as soon as people adopt it, they begin implementation. They're, and Jason could probably speak more on this, they're very specific on when they start implementation. So they only have a certain number of cities that they will begin implementation on each quarter. So October first was the next opening that they had to begin implementation.
Okay, so that's mainly Tyler's timeframe, the way that works.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Vice Mayor?
No, I didn't have one.
You, I have a question. I have a couple, actually. I mean, it does sound like awful amount of money, right? Four hundred, basically half a million dollars, but I was doing my homework as well, and that's about the fair, fair price, and I'm happy to see that. We're not going with something brand, brand new, and that it's actually been tested and tested with cities that are surrounding us, like Monterey Park and Pasadena. So my question is going to, my question is going to be more tied to the hundred and twenty-five opposed to the forty-two. I know, I understand that we have to migrate and combine all the softwares and all that, that's understandable. But I just, it's more of a statement. But I just, it's more of a statement other than the question, and it's just maybe every year paying 125,000, to a certain point, I think, we're probably going to have to, if we do decide to go with, reevaluate this later on along the line, maybe four or five years later, because I don't know how, with technology changing, I don't know how that's gonna, is that number gonna go down, or is it gonna stay steady? And how much more technical support we're gonna really need after five years that around that time, we probably have all the nuts and bolts pretty much tightened up, I will hope. Question regarding, so that was the comment. Question regarding the training, is there gonna be, if we approve, is there, I know there's that gap that Councilmember Chang mentioned, is there gonna be a training that's gonna be deployed from now to then? Is that being considered?
Yes, council member. So as part of the implementation, there, in the budget, there is 1,344 hours of implementation built into what we're presenting that is performed by Tyler. So within that, within those hours, there'll be training included.
Anyone else? No. Okay, so Chief Secretary Card, do we have any public comment?
No public comment, Mayor.
Okay, so it's now time for council discussion. Who would like to start?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been made by Vice Mayor Manchaca and second by Councilmember Chan. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item, please.
City Council Reorganization. The City Council will now select a new mayor and vice mayor for the coming year. Recognition of the outgoing mayor and incoming mayor and vice mayor will occur at the next regular meeting. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay. Selection of Mayor. I now declare the offices of Mayor and Vice Mayor vacant. The floor is now open for nominations for the selection of Mayor. Are there any nominations for Mayor?
I nominate a Vice Mayor. Manchaca.
Second question. The Mayor. I second.
Councilmember Manchaca has been nominated for Mayor. Are there any other nominations for Mayor? Hearing none, I close the floor to nominations and declare that Denise Manchaca is selected as Mayor by acclamation. Congratulations, Mayor Manchaca. I'll now turn the meeting over to you for the conduct of the remainder of the meeting and the selection of Vice Mayor. Please move to the center seat on the dais. The floor is now open for nominations for the selection of Vice Mayor. Are there any nominations for Vice Mayor?
I would like to make a nomination. Can I, I would like to nominate Councilmember Chan.
Okay, and we don't need a second, and we just need nominations. So we have Councilmember Chan, any other nominations? Okay, so since I see none, I close the floor to nominations and declare that Councilmember Eric Chan is elected as Vice Mayor by acclamation. Congratulations. Let's see, City Manager's Report? Okay, that makes it easy. Councilmembers' comments and conference meeting reports, who would like to start? I just looked at you, but I'll call on you. Vice Mayor Chan.
Thank you, Mayor Manchaca. Just a few quick things, things, events I've attended the last couple of weeks. On March 19th, I attended a taco fundraiser for retired San Gabriel Police Chief, no, Police Department Detective Greg Mallette, to help with his medical expenses in his fighting, his brave fight against cancer. On the 21st, I attended a Business Networking Breakfast at the San Gabriel Hilton. On the 22nd, I attended the Ramadan dinner at the San Gabriel Mosque. It was a lovely event in our Muslim community, and it was, it was just a lovely event, so, and the hosts were very gracious. On March 25th, I attended the San Gabriel State of the City Address. Thank you to Mayor Wu, or former Mayor Wu, outgoing Mayor Wu, and the staff. You all did a great job. See, yeah, excellent. And on March 27th, 27th, I attended the Arcadia Chamber of Commerce lunch meeting at, it was a networking lunch meeting at the Derby in Arcadia, always very nice. And later that day, I attended a Pasadena Chamber of Commerce networking event at California Pizza Kitchen to raise funds for victims of the Eden Fire. So that concludes my report. I yield, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Who would like to?
Vice Mayor would be more better. Give to, give to pressure. Okay, okay, all right. And on March 26th, I have a chance to, with Mayor Wu, to go to the county, for the county is really open for our local business too. You know, these two, two weeks, it's a good, one is for the state, one is for the county, the, they provide us if anything help, they, they have the seminars for the, almost each department head, give to our brief briefing, it's a help to like, especially for the, like this Eden Fire, the how to do the emergency. Okay, and yeah, a lot of good information. Okay, and, yeah, okay. And last Saturday, it's morning, I have also with Mayor Wu, it's go to the quarter, I, Taiwan needs food in our neighborhood city. It's, it's a really good business, and especially for the people, they, if they, especially for our Mayor Wu, he can remember the, the childhood, the food. Okay, but I think this kind of, the food culture, so maybe hopefully for future, in our city too, and let our city have make more, generate more tax revenue too. Okay, yeah, that's it, my, my report.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I want congratulation. The new mayor, congratulation, the former mayor, and congratulations to Vice Mayor Chan. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Well, of course, congratulations to our new mayor, and our Denise Manchaca and Vice Mayor, no, no longer the Councilmember, but Vice Mayor Chan. Well, it's truly my great honor to work with all of you that are during my term as a mayor. But I would just leave this for next time, but I would, I would like to say that all the glory and the great accomplishment that we have achieved together, that is for our city, that belongs to our dedicated council members, and who has committed to this journey for the long run. So I really wish you the best. And on March 25th, I have the honor to present the State of the City, and I would like to express my sincere gratitude to several individuals that turned, you know, the teams that has made this event so successful. First, I would like to thank our city manager, Mark Lazaro, our Public Information Officer, Eliana Flores, and also PIO Assistant Jesse Cazao, for helping out to put together with a complete and comprehensive presentation. And I would like to thank all our department heads for providing the timely updates that allows me to share the most current and accurate information with our constituents. Special thanks to our PD and Fire for presenting the Honor Guard, that which set the tone for the evening with the sense of elegance and respect. And I won't repeat what been shared in my presentation, but the State of City video will be available soon on our city's website for those who missed it. And thank you again for everyone, for the amazing year, and a heartfelt thank you to the City Council colleagues and for attending and supporting this event that night. And on March 26th, I attended the event hosted by the Office of Supervisor Hilda Solis, with Councilman Ding, that I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to meet Ms. Ashley Strake, the Director of International Event Diplomacy for city mayor current base. The 2028 Summer Olympics will take place from July 14 to July 30, featuring more than 58 sports, over 800 events, and more than 80 venues, and again, are expected to attract 30,000 broadcasters and media personnel, generate an estimate $18 billion in economic output, and draw 12 to 15 million tickets fans. And I got her email, you know, in around this noon, noon time, that confirmed our city, the City of San Gabriel is now connected with the Intergovernmental Affairs Office of Los Angeles Mayor's Office. So given the scale of impact of Olympics, and as the founding, the birthplace of Los Angeles region, I will, I will continue to monitor the opportunity to collaborate with the organizers and advocates for the City of San Gabriel to be the, to be considered as the cooperating or participating the city in 2028. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'm all trying to make mine short. State of City address, I will say, I think you've really raised the bar, and it was very well done, very positive, and, you know, having it, having the food in the lobby, and then having the actual presentation along with the Honor Guard. That was the very first time they've ever had the police and fire together, so kudos to Sergeant-to-be, Gobino Pañuelos, which I believe is, he's now in charge of that group. So that was well done. Former mayor? I gotta remind myself about that. So thank you for that. The fundraiser for Detective Mallette, all I wanted to say is that it was like a family reunion. There were so many officers who had been with us, including the Chief of Police now for the San Fernando Valley, Fabian Valdez. He came back, but there was just so many people who came back. But there was also agencies from all over, so it was just a really nice level of support for one of our retirees that really needs it, and he actually came with his family. So it was a very touching moment. And anyway, so thank you to everyone who was there, either you bought a Raffle ticket or you had the lunch. The Chinese Women's Business Association, that was a great workshop also on a bright Saturday morning, and it was just wonderful to see that we are being chosen to do those type of outreach opportunities, and so I was happy to be there. And then Ramadan, you know, most people don't realize, we have a mosque since 1984 in the city of San Gabriel, and to cross, kind of across the street from Jefferson Middle School. And I actually used to go to Ramadan when I was on the school board, and now I continue with, it's become kind of a tradition, all of us being there every year for Ramadan. So again, I deeply appreciate the invitation every year, and every year it seems to get bigger and bigger, and just to, again, just a very, the warmth there and the welcoming. It was just a beautiful evening. And then, lastly, I just wanted to mention, one of the things that former Mayor Wu did was really convince us or persuade us to move away from fireworks and to do the drones for the Fourth of July. And I just want to say that there was an article just recently that the Rose Bowl has decided to pivot from fireworks to drones this year. So we were ahead of the curve there. We did it first. So hopefully, other cities start to join us in doing the drones for a variety of reasons, but especially with the Eden Canyon fires that just took place, the, the fact that the air quality, and just safety overall. So I am excited that we're going to continue on with that new tradition at the Fourth of July, but, you know, Pasadena, we did it first. So anyway, have to rub it in. But anyway, so that concludes my comments, and we are going to recess to closed session. So do I adjourn here first to recess to?
No, this meeting is adjourned. It's a separate meeting that we're going to.
Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. The next regular City Council meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 15th, at 6:30 PM. It is 7:23. This meeting is adjourned, and council will recess to closed session. Thank you.[1798.41][1798.41][applause]